A work session for Perry City Council for February the first, two thousand and twenty-one, quarter period. We have four. Item three on our initial items for review and discussion. Item three A is the office of the mayor, and three A one is the discussion with the council concerning redistricting process. It's going to be done by Ms. Laura Mathis from the Regional Commission. And before she starts, council members, I would make a recommendation on three B that we put the second presentation with Mr. Mesley first ahead of Mr. Smith, if that's okay with everybody. Thank you. Ms. Mathis, it's yours. We'd be glad to have you here with us this evening. We look forward to the information you have for us.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you very much. So I was asked by the, I got a left on this, so you're working for security. I was asked by the mayor to come today to just secure some key concepts around redistricting when the, the city census is complete. The next phase that will involve the city of Perry is around redistricting. So the goal today is to really make sure everybody understands the process and the terms that get used during redistricting, and to identify any issues or things for consideration for future discussion. And a couple of things to just keep in mind. So redistricting is really about reapportionment, those two terms get used interchangeably. It's really about making sure that you're adjusting the political boundaries to show the, to reflect the concentration of population across geography. And in, in the redistricting world, the geography that matters is the census block. And we're going to talk about that, sort of break that down for you just a second. It is the smallest geography at which the census collects data. We anticipated that by now we would actually have the data layer that comes from the Census Bureau, but actually on Friday they released a new schedule that says that the data won't be available for official redistricting to begin at the state level until sometime this summer, more likely July. So that, that's a key factor. So this is a great time for you to be learning and understanding and discussing issues, but know that you can't really get going into redistricting until you have that data from the Census Bureau. One of the principal foundational elements of redistricting is the one person, one vote, which is where you try and make the districts as ge, as, as numerically similar and even as you possibly can. And for cities, you have a deviation, an amount to which your districts can be different between each other, and that's a ten person deviation. And that's because you can't split up lots, you can't, like, you want them to be natural boundaries, for people to easily recognize I'm in district one or district two. And so since you're stuck with that geography, that's why you have that standard deviation of ten percent. And then lastly, if all you're doing is looking at changing, rebalancing your districts and not looking at changing anything associated with your government structure, then redistricting for a city is actually pretty straightforward. You have to adopt an ordinance after reading it twice, and a table number of rules. If you want to do something beyond that, in changing your district structure, the number of council members, or how council members are elected, then that requires an act of a general assembly. And obviously, given the timeframe that we're in right now, with when the data would be available, that would not be something that would happen in this legislative session, but it would be something that you would be looking to prepare for for the next legislative session. So we're going to dive into a couple of different things. But I first wanted to start by sort of walking you through what the city did in 2010, or 2011. So after the statistical census of 2010, the data was received, the block level data that allows the redistricting process to happen. And the city requested assistance from the Middle Georgia Regional Commission to assess that the need for redistricting process. Cities, unlike the state general assembly positions or in the congressional positions, cities are really, you're the, the last ones on the list for the state to get to, to redistricting. And the city wanted to go ahead and forward with working on redistricting after the 2010 census. So they requested assistance from the Regional Commission. And we conducted a preliminary analysis, and I'll show you the results of that in just a second. And then we had several work sessions with Mayor and council, that should come up with the new boundaries for the three districts. And then we presented two different plans that you decided which plan you wanted to go with, and that's the plan that's in effect today. And that's a process that's very much available to the city after the 2020, the city data is available, if you should choose to do so. The other option for redistricting is to, is to work with the legislative office of reapportionment at the state, which are going to be the very last ones, because it's not, they're not on the same main data schedule as all of the other jurisdictions that they go through redistricting for. And so it might not happen in a timely manner, if you went to their office of legislative reapportionment. So the main data geography, and you had a picture of this in your handout, it's that census block. And so if you take the state of Georgia and then Houston County, you have got an arrow. Yeah, if I can. I'm not good at naming it, I'm sorry. So you see Houston County, and then the city limits of Perry. And the city limits, city has four census tracts. So I'm now in the, on the bottom row in the far left corner. You've got four census tracts that cover the city of Perry. And then within each tract, there are block groups, so groups of blocks. You can think about it that way. And then within that block group, there are individual blocks. So you see how they're getting down to the very smallest geography as you go down to the block. And that data set that we'll get from the census will have four key elements. That's the total population, the race, the voting age population, and the number of housing units. Because those are the four pieces of data that should be used when looking at redistricting. You cannot split blocks, as I mentioned previously, and you really, as much as you possibly can, you want those boundaries to be natural. So not neighbor, not two people living side by side of each other, but people across the street, could be in different districts, which you probably have now. What you might want to divide between two houses, just because it gets a little confusing for voters, it gets a little confusing for you as elected representatives, and that's the reason that you have that deviation of ten percent that you can have. So this is the data from 2010, where we started the calculations that determines the total population of 2010 census was thirteen thousand eight thirty-nine. And based on the number of districts that you have, and varying number of representatives that you have, the target was four thousand six hundred thirteen people per district. Under the process that you go through, this is sometimes a little counterintuitive, you really stay focused on the total population, and try to get your numbers as close as you can to that target based on total population. And then once you know you've got total population within this data deviation, that's when you look at your race and voting age data, to make sure that you haven't, by, by selecting the blocks the way they've been selected, and drawing the districts the way they've been drawn, in a graph plan, that you haven't affected some population, either a voting age group, or by race. So it's total population first, and then race. So when we took just the raw data from twenty, from twenty ten, and we knew the target was four thousand six hundred and thirteen per, before the city started the redistricting, you see how the three districts were not balanced. District three had five thousand people in it, District one had twenty-six hundred people in it, and District two had about five thousand. So the process that I mentioned, so we, we worked with the city of Perry on in 2011, took those districts to being as balanced as they possibly could. And that's really what your goal is, is to get as balanced as you can, to make sure that each person, each one of those thirteen thousand residents in 2010 had the equal representation, an equal, an equal opportunity of representation on the council. So this is a map, and it was also in your package, just a shortish take, so you can see the differences in the districts and the concentration of population from between two thousand and two thousand and ten. And then in the 2020 block, that shows you what the current districts are today. That's the district boundaries that were drawn in two thousand and eleven. And the projections, the, that Esri, which is the G I S software that's utilized, they've done forecasts as to what the population projections are for Perry, or the concentrations of population are. But I think it's hopeful to just sort of see, if you look at the concentration of population over time, where you've had an increase in population geographically in a city. So based on the fact that since 2010, when redistricting was last looked at, the city had annexed a considerable amount of lands into the city. And also the fact that they showed it an amazing job with census participation with the 2020 census, one of the highest participation rates in the region. I would, my gut just says you're probably going to need to do redistricting again. That the data, when we get that initial analysis, initial data, and we just apply it to your current boundaries, just like we did in 2011, the data's going to show you've got some unevenness between your districts that needs to be adjusted for. A couple of things that is, sort of, just for your information, that I thought was, it was insightful to me, to know whether or not your increase in population, what has been sort of the demographic shift for the city of Perry, especially for those factors that are important in going through the redistricting process. And first of all, obviously, since 2010, since, between two thousand and, two thousand and ten, your population increased by forty-four percent. And you're projected to have a significant increase in population by the time the 2020 data is released, or when the 2020 data is released. But your, your median age since nineteen eighty, which was really the last time they told that, that you created this structure for council, your median age hasn't shifted that much. And your voting age population is still about the same percentage of your total population as it has been. So it's pretty steady. Also, in racial composition, there hasn't been a significant shift. Really, the biggest shift in racial composition over the past twenty years has been in the rise of other races besides white and black. You've had an increase in the Hispanic population going to four percent versus immediately zero percent in nineteen eighty. So as you go, as I said, you start with population first, and once you make sure that you've got population taking place, then you look at other demographic factors, and voting age population, and, and race. As you have grown, you stay pretty similar in characteristics, demographic characteristics, over the, over the decades. So some things to think about is when the mayor asks for us to sort of present this information as sort of proof of thought, and to make sure the job are prepared for the process that will come before you sometime later this year. The structure that you have today is six city council members represented, elected from three districts. That's a structure that's been in place since nineteen eighty-three, at least, I think, was what we determined. And a population has changed since nineteen eighty-three, just in terms of the sheer number of people that each council member is representing, or each district is representing. So then the question becomes, is this the right structure and the right number of council members for Perry today in 2020 and going forward? And the answer there will be yes. There's not a wrong answer, except if you leave, if you have very unbalanced council, council districts. You can keep the structure as is, with three districts, with two from each district. You can add more districts and more posts, so that you grow the size of city council. And you reduce the number of individual citizens that each of you represents. You can add an at-large member or two, in order to give a greater perspective, so that each person, instead of just adding one representative on council, I get one and a portion of a person. It's sort of how the census, or that the Voting Rights Act looks at that. But really, the only way to get it wrong is to know that you're out of balance when the population numbers come out, and not to really then correct it. We did do a little looking, you know, each local government in Georgia is required to complete the, a survey with the Department of Community Affairs, and you've got the data there about average council size in, in Georgia. In your population grouping, four, five, and six, five and six are the most common council sizes. And there's a mix of them being elected at large, or versus districts, or some kind of blend. So you're not too small, too big, you're sort of right in the middle of what your peers, from purely a population size, are doing. But if you consider, if you want to consider the structure, and you add another city council seat, you add an at-large position. I, one idea maybe, if you wanted to have community conversation around the makeup of council, to get citizen input as to whether or not adding, or converting to an at-large system might be more favorable for Perry at this time. How can you answer any questions? I know I went through a lot of information, but how can you answer any questions that you might have about the process? I will tell you the, probably, the most interesting part, and, and most frustrating part of redistricting is that if you're going to get down to that smallest geography, you're going to know the streets that we're looking at. And you're going to know that there are seven houses on that street, and Sally's lives here, she's got five kids, and this person lives here, and they've got three kids, and that's only one person in that household. But if they didn't complete the census, if all of those people who you know that in that block didn't participate in the census, doesn't matter, but we know that they're there. That census data is the data that we, that we use. And we found it time and time again, that as we were looking for numbers of people, an elected official would go, oh, go to, go to Jones Street. I know that there's about, there's about twelve houses there, and we get the population we need on Jones Street. And we go to Jones Street, and two houses responded to the census. And we're stuck with that data, even though, I mean, it's an imperfect system, but it is the data that gets used in the process. But, you know, it, it becomes very, very much a back and forth, and several iterations to come up with the right plan for city council.
Council members, questions relative to the information that's been provided?
One question for me, Mayor. Can we expect, I guess, a process similar to what was done in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, in terms of we'll get the data from the Census Bureau, work with the Georgia Regional Commission, you guys determine the formula, and data. I teach history, not math, so yeah. And then, once we get that from you all, discuss our various options from there.
That, if, if that's the process that the city wants to follow, the Regional Commission is available to provide that assistance.
All right. Thank you. On your, why access on the, what are the numbers up and down there, twelve hundred and fifty?
That's number of local governments with that size structure of city council. So the majority of cities in Georgia have five members on city council.
Council members?
I may have missed this earlier. Do you have an idea when the census data will come out?
The, the latest release that we got on Friday said July. I would tell you, we should have had it in November. And then they said March, and now they say July.
So what would be recommended as our next steps? I noticed that's a point.
Certainly, in terms of being prepared for when the data is received, if you wanted to request the assistance of the Regional Commission, if it had you in the queue, so you were one of the personal governments that we work with. If you wanted any additional research or anything done on structure of city council, we'd provide that as well.
Ms. Gilmore, what are the things that we as a council should be thinking about, or doing research on our own relative to the potential of redistricting?
Well, first thing I would recommend, since we had success with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission last time, is that you authorize hiring or using them again for the census, so then we'll know who the source of providing the data. Second thing, I think that's very important, if you go back and take a look at the race makeup between years, thank you, is that the black population percentage-wise for the city has remained pretty much the same. However, I believe the data's going to show that the black residents are much more diversified around the city, between all the different districts than they were in previous years. That is going to potentially be, make it more difficult for council to follow. Historically, what was done was to try and line up the census blocks, so that you can have the one person, one vote, and as much as possible, you have chances for a majority lap district. I think the third major thing that you need to be thinking about is what size population do you think would be appropriate to represent Perry? And that directly goes to how many council seats you're going to have. You know, we've had numerous discussions about the residents in Perry out by Matt Arthur School, that have a Catholic mailing address, and a lot of times not feel that they are part of the city. And that may be an avenue that can, can support that. And then if you start analyzing that, the next question would be, how many representatives are you going to have from each of the districts? Currently, we have two. If you were to add another district, then you would have eight, I believe is correct, on council. And not that you necessarily have to go with the chart, but you saw the chart that very few, you know, cities have that many council members. That doesn't mean you shouldn't, it's just, you know, the data is there. And the last thing you may want, should be taking into consideration, because I believe there are pros and cons with that, is whether we should have any at-large council seats. Now, I would not recommend to you all that you go with four districts, two members in each district, plus two council members at large, for example. I mean, the body just gets too big. But that may be one of the alternatives that you take a look at. The last item I suggest that you take into consideration is very important, this is purely political on your standpoint, except for the mayor, is that where you reside, and what census block that what census block that's in and how that may be impacted by this, by changes that happen to be made. I do not want to give the impression all these things will be quick and easy, but the more we get ready to think about that, the better off we're going to be. Because the summertime for the census data seems pretty far off. But once it comes, the clock starts ticking, and you've got to be moving about what it is you're going to do. And that can be compounded, as the mass has pointed out, if we have to go to the General Assembly to get something checked.
Okay. Council members?
Given that, questions or concerns?
I have one comment about that, and I realize our discussion is not about voting so much right now, but I want to say this every time we're in discussion and we come anywhere close to this topic, that I believe it would, we would greatly increase the participation of voters and the sense that they are citizens of Perry, of the Matt Arthur population, if they could always have a voting precinct where they live. When I would speak to people that to vote, they would say, well, now, where do I need to go? And I'd say, well, you just go to Roger Park. Well, where is that? And, you know, they, they don't ever have reason to go to Roger Park. I think it disenfranchises voters to not have a precinct in their general neighborhood area. So I hope that that's something that we'll consider the next time any election comes up, and whether it's local or, I know, a federal or whatever. But that's, I think that's a very strategic point, and I encountered it face to face.
That is a topic that we're talking with the board elections about, because they've got to man the location and stuff like that, but that is going on in discussion with the county, because we think, we agree with 100%, that's exactly what we need. We've got to have a precinct down in that area. And I don't want to force it. Right now, they go to veterans on federal, if they're going to vote in a federal election, they'll go to veterans, and they can win. But they stay confused with that, well, you know, where, where do I vote to vote? We either need to put our vote at veterans, you know, but we prefer to put it at large.
Just somewhere out, you know, and they're part of the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Madison, thank you for taking the evening with us.
Thanks.
Appreciate the information, and we'll be looking forward to working with you and your staff as we move forward to July.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you. Item 3B is the office of the city manager. We have agreed that we will move up to the item two, the new city hall project update. Would you be able to measure with me if you could go ahead and come forward?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you guys being here this evening and sharing this information that you've been able to develop about our soon-to-be, you know, new city hall down there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here. We have sincerely enjoyed working with folks in the city, each of the departments that we talked about briefly tonight, and have found each of them to be very well organized and articulate about what they need. So it's really a pleasure for us to be here. I do want to recognize, as I get started, Alex Grimaldo, who is my associate and has been working diligently with me as we have gone through the process thus far. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. Wanted to take just a bit of time, look at our agenda real quick. We're here tonight really to give you an update on where we are in this program. This is a feasibility study to determine several things about the building. The first, of course, is the programmatic fit, making sure that the building as it is will accommodate the needs that the city would like to see placed in the building. Secondly, we'll talk about our progress, and then we'll go over some next steps. And obviously, my time is yours, this is not a fixed agenda, and if at any time during the presentation you wish to stop me and drill down on a certain point of detail, I would be more than happy to stop. So I will continue unless I, I see a hand raised or a question. I'm also, I'm going to assume that you can understand me through my mask, is that, can everybody understand me? Okay. If it becomes a problem, simply tell me, and I will, I will try and remove it. We'll start, let's start in the area of the building that really is going to require the largest amount of adjustment for the program that you would like to see in it. And of course, one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the desire to place a new council chamber and a new municipal court in the building. And many of you that have lived here for a long time recognize that when this was the county courthouse, this top floor was the superior courtroom for the county. And so it was, in fact, one large space, and over the, intermeading years had been, had been divided up. We kind of like the fact that, in a way, the building is returning to its original configuration in that. And so you can see the large blue, light blue area that's in the center of the plan of this, of the, of the third, this is what we're calling the second floor, some people call it the third floor, would be, is proposed as a large area. Based on our calculations to date, we, we believe that we can accommodate 215 people in that space, which would be a round number for those that could attend council and could also attend municipal court. So the, the actual space itself, again, is the light blue square that's sort of in the middle of the plan. You'll notice that there are a lot, there's a lot of dark blue that's indicated around that particular component of the plan. Those are court support functions, so the court clerk, some of the attorney spaces, all working in conjunction around that floor. One of the things that we always look at as we start to talk about modifying a building is just really to look at where do, where do most of the people go? And how do we get people into the, into the building and out of the building? Of course, when we have a space that's going to accommodate that number of people, we want to use the most efficient way of getting folks in and out as we can. And again, those of you that know the building realize that there's a very large set of stairs that really faces the west and comes into the building from that direction. That is now combined with an elevator that's also located on that end of the building. So our recommendation, I guess, at this point would be, is that we maintain the main entry for court, municipal court, and for council chamber on that side of the building, coming up those stairs or coming up through the elevator. Additionally, there's a, there's a nice lobby in that location that they can accommodate the room that will be needed to accommodate the crowds that are coming through. And this dark blue block right here also indicates where security could be placed. So there just seem to be several components of the building that really do kind of lend itself to the organization on this level to accommodate that, that large meeting area. So in terms of being, being able to accommodate that component of the program, the, the second floor seems to be laying out very well. The other thing that will work nicely is we do have restrooms, the major restrooms are located on this level as well. And so we have, we will try and take advantage of those. I will say, at this point, we've not calculated exactly the capacity of those restaurants to handle the crowd. I think we're going to be close, we'll do some more investigation on that and bring you our results at a future date. We have, however, looked at the exiting capacity from that level, which is something these gentlemen over here are concerned about and should be. And we do, at this point, have enough exit capacity to adequately remove that number of people from that space in the building, should there be, should there be some kind of an emergency when everybody would need to leave very quickly. I wanted to include just a picture of that nice area that I stare, you can kind of see how that is, will function very graciously to bring the public in and up into the building and into the space which will be the lobby for the area. There are just a couple of technical considerations that I'll mention here. Number one, when this building was constructed, the stairs in the building did not have to be separated from a fire rating standpoint from the remainder of the building. At that point, the code had not developed to the point that it has today. So in this case, we will be coming back to you with a recommendation for a methodology to provide some type of rated barrier that will close the stair area off from the lobby area beyond it. At this point in time, we think the system that makes most sense is a sliding, a horizontally sliding fire door. We are, we're working on exactly what our recommendation will be, but that does seem to be one of the things that would be a logical candidate here. First of all, the space can accommodate it, and secondly, we can, we can fit it in within the historic context of the space from an architectural standpoint, and it would be very nice. There is a cost consideration, and we, of course, will have to, to look at that as well. The second thing that I'll note is, I'm going to try and put my pointer on it, if I can get the pointer to do it. This, this wall right here, you see where those doors are and that wall right there? That wall, because of what's called occupancy separation, will need to be separated by a two-hour fire-rated assembly. So that's going to require that that wall construction be changed out, so there will be some upgrades to that wall to meet the requirements of, of that assembly. So I think, while the space functions very well, I guess my message is that there will be some technical things that we'll do within that third floor to accommodate the needs from a code standpoint in, in the building. Let's go, we can move on down and look at the second floor now, try, the, most of us look at the second floor, we're calling it the first floor, because it's the first floor above gray. And one of the really nice things that I can report to you here is, we think the building as it is currently configured actually accommodates your program fairly well. One thing I will point out is that you notice there's still a lot of blue that's happening around the, the east end of the building down here. And that really, that has continued to be court support functions with the court clerk and some spaces for them, cashier area for them. But essentially, what we were trying to do was really sort of zone this end of the building so that all of the courts-related activities would be located on, in this area. To two reasons, one is efficiency for people that need to get together, it's, it's sometimes just as close to run up a stair as it is to go down a hallway, so we've got the vertical association. But then also, just from a security standpoint, we felt like having all of the court functions together would make sense from that standpoint. So that's the majority of, of that color blue that you see there. There's an existing nice, large room in the facility, those of you that vote there will know it, that's where you go in and kind of fill out your preliminary information, we're proposing that as a, as a central conference room that can be, can be shared and used by many. We have some offices located in this area, we've got a space where the mayor'd have an office in this area, some waiting space. And then this light brown, this darker brown area is where the Economic Development Department would locate. The green is city clerk, up in this corner over here. And there's also an opportunity, this sort of light gray area that's located in the middle of the building, if the city wished to maintain even a cashier location or some kind of a publicly focused function in the building, that would be a wonderful place to do it. We really are, we really are kind of looking at this intersection here of those, of the circulation, kind of as the main street, the central square of this building. And we, and so we're intrigued about what we can do to kind of put people-oriented functions around that central part of the building to make them easy to find, easy to orient, and very friendly for the public as they come, as they come to use the building. Just a kind of a quick image of the second floor, most of you know it very well. And I will say one thing is, we've gone back in and looked at it, and this, again, with sort of fresh eyes, we worked on this building many years ago, and it's always fun to go back in and look at a building again after you've been away from it for a while. And I think that this building is very evocative of the age in which it was originally designed, which was in the late 40s. And so it's, it's low-bearing construction, so in many cases, these hallways are really, are really very corridor-like, with smaller door openings that just kind of come off of that hallway. So there's not really a sense of the space beyond that door or, or spaces where, that you can see in, you can say, okay, I need to go here, this is where I'm supposed to go, you can see in and kind of have a sense of arrival and approach and vision. So we have talked briefly, and again, I, I, just this is very preliminary concept, about the idea of trying to go in and, and look at some spaces along those corridors where we could actually carve out some glass areas so that, as there are portions of your program that would be facilitated by functioning well and being very accessible to the public and being recognizable, that we could open some, some areas in that corridor so that that would expand the space, make them visible, and we think make the building much more friendly. So in this, in this rendering here, the area that you're seeing sort of as the light blue on the wall is, is just kind of a beginning indication of how some places where we could begin to open, we could begin to open those walls up and, and give the building a very different sense of personality, make it more open and make it friendlier. As we, as we go down to the, the lower level of the building, we're not really, your program doesn't require that we put a lot of program in the basement of, of this building. And we think that's really, in a sense, a good thing, because as those of you that know the building know, the daylight that's, that comes into that lower level is pretty limited. You have some small windows that give a little bit of light in, in some of the spaces. But there are some things that function very well down here. Again, there's, there's the, the green area here represents some area that the clerk, city clerk can use for storage, being used that way now by the county, doing, doing very well. And this blue block right here, associated with the municipal court, is in need to have some holding cells, just some holding chambers, so that as inmates are brought for adjudication in the court, that they have a place to wait that's secure and safe and out of the public. So there are some spaces on the lower level that we think could adapt very well for that use. And then essentially, there's a, a small area up here where there's a loading dock and some, a gate, or in, within some walls that surrounds a loading area there. That actually almost works very well as a small salary court. And those of you that know criminal justice design know that when you bring an inmate into a situation, you don't want them in an uncontrolled area, like we wouldn't want to take them out of the vehicle in a parking lot and try and walk them into the building. So we do think that this loading dock and its, its configuration actually serves fairly well, because the, you can come into that, that area through the building and down this hall in that lower level to this, this holding area here. And when the hearing time for that particular inmate comes, they can come right down here to this stair, up two floors, and into the, and into the court. Really, in a very reasonable way of circulating, circulating through the building. So I think that particular feature of the building seems to, seems to work well. This is just a chart to kind of give you an area or an idea of how the areas in the building are, are being used. The, the light blue bar here is the, is the new council chamber located on the, on the second floor. This blue bar next to it, darker blue, is the amount of space that's allocated to the court support functions. And then, obviously, you can see the other departments are, share much less of the overall square footage of the building. I think the good news is, again, the program for the building has been developed through several conversations with, with your staff. And so from a functional standpoint, we think that we're close, we may not be exact, but we think that we're close to determining what, what they will need to, in terms of space into the future, and the building seems to accommodate that very well. The other, I guess, good news is that there, there are spaces in the building that we don't need to use yet to accommodate your program, which really allow for some in-the-shell expansion, should that become something that you would like to do in the future. So all of those things, I think, mitigate well for the use of, of the building. So in terms of talking about the actual scope of work that we, that we're undertaking for you, kind of an, an update about where we are. for you, kind of a, an update about where we are in terms of the departmental, uh, locations and layouts, the, the program-oriented portion of the work, with the information that we have received from your staff, we feel very good about where, uh, where that, that particular, uh, milestone is. And you can see, we've estimated it at about ninety percent, of course, depending on the input that we receive from you tonight. Uh, we have also, you also commissioned us to undertake a review of the mechanical and electrical systems in the building, just simply to determine, uh, what, if any modifications might be made. I don't have a final report on that for you yet, and we shouldn't have it this week, but I think the good news is this, and right now, the, uh, I always think about these things in, in preliminary standpoint in terms of two, two things. Number one, electrically, does the building have enough power coming to it to suit the function and the need and the use of that we, we will be bringing to it? And, and my electrical engineers answer to it at this point, to that question now, is that yes, we do, we have enough power coming to the building. Obviously, there will be some adjustment in terms of branch circuits and things that need to be, uh, adjusted to move, fit into the program, uh, but overall, having enough power coming to the building is a, a large benefit. Secondly, whenever we change the, the function of a building or the ownership of a building, one of the things we, we always are concerned about is, is how the existing mechanical system will accommodate new uses, changing uses, and, and those kinds of things. And I think at this point, I can tell you that, uh, the initial finding of our mechanical engineer is that with the exception of the large meeting space on the third floor or the second floor, uh, he feels like that the existing equipment will service. Now, it's, it's getting some age on it, of course, you all know that, because the renovation was done about twenty years ago, uh, but it's within the service life. We do think that there will be some additional equipment required for the, uh, the, uh, council chambers, municipal court space. Uh, there are some new air change requirements from a code standpoint that would be, uh, will come into play there, uh, and with the number of folks that are in there, we will, we will, uh, have to observe those new code requirements. So that's, oh, and then our, our budget study, I think, again, uh, we, we are not quite ready, we haven't had your input to this point, but our, our, uh, our budgeting team member is ready to get started on that, whenever, uh, whenever we authorize them to proceed, whenever you would authorize us to proceed. So in terms of next steps, uh, just quick, looking at it quickly, uh, uh, one would be to meet with and review the departmental spaces with, uh, staff to assure ourselves and them that we have accurately interpreted what they've told us that we need. Again, of course, that's if you authorize us to do that. Uh, second is to go ahead and complete our HBAC analysis report so that we have some more definitive information on our, in our hands to provide to you about the systems that are in the building. Third is to go ahead and accommodate our budget study, uh, and, uh, we think that'll take, that'll be about a three-week duration at the point that we're authorized to move forward with that, uh, and then prepare our final report and deliver to you. So, Mr. Mayor, uh, that's my report, and I would be ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Messley, you're very informative. Council members, what questions might you have on the information you've been presenting?
I have one question, is there any part, and really this might be more of a leak, I don't know, is there any part of our operation that is missing in terms of fitting in, in this, in this design plan? Because I, I love the idea, uh, if possible, all of the operation going here, not needing any additional buildings after that.
What Mr. Messley has presented totally complies with what the anticipated layout for those offices going into that building. As you may remember, the first priority of municipal court, and then the second was to take care of council needs, and then the third, uh, depending on available space, would be where the clerk, city clerk, has some of the economic development functions, like main street management, those type of things, and he is taking care of that.
Mayor, first of all, I don't think that we're going to be able to do what we're trying to do without an additional building, because I think there's no place to put customer service in this building effectively and those type of things, so I think that there will be some type of administrative building that will be needed in the future to complement this as well, so. I think we're going to have to move forward with understanding what we're going to do here, and then understanding what kind of additional space we're going to be needing in the future. Questions?
Um, additional space that is there that you said is not, is not needed at this time, um, that's not going to allow us to have? If we have space, we're not using it?
Well, I think as, as we get further along, go back and take a look at it to see, but if you go back and refer to the second floor and first floor, available space is in the basement.
That's correct.
And it does not lend itself very well to a number of the other functions. The other thing that's very important is to remember that particularly the court function, but also the city clerk, has a great need for space storage. And that's what we're intent, anticipating most of the basement's going to be used for, is storage space. Uh, you know, for example, uh, you know, Mr. Messley talked about, wasn't it 213 people sitting in there?
Yeah.
Well, that's 213 chairs, and 213 chairs are not always going to need it to be there, so they're going to have to be moved someplace. You see what I mean? That's, that's where we start talking about some of the service for the, uh, storage area and that type of stuff.
Help, help me understand, on the second floor right here, on the, uh, dark blue, I see, uh, and this might be where, uh, Lee, uh, I see the office with the judge, how often is, is this judge, does he come to here every day? Is he set up, I mean, and then I see also, how many other, uh, I see an assistant judge spot of court, part of office one, and there's lots of dark blue on this left side for the court stuff, but is there that many people that are involved, certain places of the court, to warrant all this room?
One thing I will say, and I guess we'll, we'll, uh, talk about this a little bit, is that, uh, we did talk with each of the, each of the departments, not just about what their current needs are, but then also about what they would see occurring over the next, uh, the intermediate future and, and into the future. So I think that, uh, while some of those say, uh, many of these functions are, are, that we need today, there is some, some, uh, some anticipation of just how staffs will grow and those kind of things that are, that are included in here. What, and I think part of that was really what we understood our mission to be, in that not just look at this building in terms of what the needs are for this year or next year, but let's look and see if the, if the, if the structure can accommodate our needs in, in the long term. And so that, I, I'll admit, fruit, that was a part, that was a part of the study that , that put them together. And if we could go back and kind of break those out for you in terms of what those are, if that would be helpful.
If I may follow up on Mr. Messley's point, when you go in and take a look at the court function, you have got two judges we have right now. You have the court's, court staff directly for them, but in addition to that, you have to provide space for prosecuting attorneys, you have to provide space for the defense attorneys, you have to provide space for, um, collection of fines and those type of things, and you also have to take care of the probation people as well. So when you start adding all those particular functions, that's what winds up, Dr., taking up a bunch of your space. The other thing is that we are anticipating with this plan here, going back on Jim's point, that we're going to rapidly be to a, uh, relatively rapidly to a point where municipal courts meet once a week. You know, we're already, or, yeah, once a week, because we're already, twice a month they're meeting. You have, what are the two major ones? What's the first one? Yeah, first one's arraignment, the, after that is court time. Um, and we just, we just think that, that the court's going to wind up becoming more and more of an ongoing function. So we're going to be moving away from as much of an emphasis on one part-time judge, and the court meets once a month, to where you have a series of support people that are going to be required, and they're going to be meeting in a much more regular basis. The, the, the primary tenant in this building is the municipal court, and its related function.
It's difficult to tell, but the rooms, and when I'm picking rooms, but the, um, like the senior judge and the assistant judge, those rooms look large. Do they ever both work at the same time? There are, there are like two aisles one morning, once, and there are, I mean, these people, if they're, even if they come once a week, they're not in there eight to five per hour?
One of the things I will say, what we, one of, one of the things we tried to do was to accommodate, and this is a really good example, so it's a good question, we, we tried to accommodate the, the new function, uh, that the city's bringing to the building as much as possible within the existing configuration of the spaces that are there. So, uh, I, I think the answer is yes, does, does the, does the judge need that much space? Probably not, that was Judge, that was Judge Luke Meyer's chamber, but he was, at the time, remember Judge Luke Meyer, he, he was, he was in that space. So, um, I think that what we did in terms of that kind of situation was to try, again, to minimize cost to rebuilding parts of the building by using as much of the existing, uh, spatial configuration of building as we could. So that's what, that's a great example, and that's, that's the reason that you see that, that size of a space. Now, I will say, on the other side, if you look on the other side, uh, which is, again, on the, on the, the south side, excuse me, it's really the north side of the stairwell, uh, we did go in there, that's one large room right now, uh, and we did go in there and split that room up for the various court clerk functions that the program indicated needed to be there. But again, that would be building inside of an existing space, we weren't taking down the walls, we were putting walls up inside of those things. That was already that large. I, I don't know what it says, that Judge Dunn had the office on the, on the, on the other side of the stairs, it was a lot bigger than Judge Luke Meyer's space, but that, I guess that's ancient history for right now, so, but I thought, we thought that was interesting.
Just give more what you need from Mr. Knight.
Well, my recommendation would be that you authorize Mr. Messley's firm to proceed, you know, to the next steps that were indicated. Uh, I do want to point out, there's still going to be probably at least two, if not more, review times for you all. So if there's something else you want to change, or some other questions come up, or whatever the case may be, in other words, you're not necessarily totally locked in right now. Uh, but the, the basic layout is a good combination between what you have, as Jim indicated, an existing older structure, plus the primary immediate space needs.
Dr. Smith?
I was just wondering, if, if next week or two, we could take a little tour of the, I'd like to see, never see at all.
You'd have to, you'd have to use your imagination, because it's really, I don't know, I mean, we can go through now and, and look at it, and I would, yeah, we'd welcome that, I think that's something we would evolve, so, you know, so.
And if, you would just like for us to be a part of that, you'd be more than happy
Council? We have a question here, with Mr. Messley moving forward with his next steps and this comparing the budget at all, do we have preference to move forward? Thank you, Mr. Messley, we look forward to working with you and looking for the final re- review here. Just give more with, do you work with me tomorrow, and set up a time to get back to the council, or just when you can take a tour there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Item 3A, can we move, 3A1, I'm sorry, 3B, it's 3B1, that's the migration to Office 365, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, as you are all aware, the city currently uses G-Suites as our primary email platform. In association with that, we also have access to a variety of, um, software productivity platforms like Google Docs, Google Sheets, Google Drive, that type of thing. Uh, we started utilizing G-Suites back in the middle of 2018, and I think, quite frankly, it has been a failed experiment to a certain extent. Uh, and there are a number of reasons behind that, uh, and you have those outlined in a memo on your board pack, uh, but what you have before you tonight for your consideration is a recommendation that we shift away from G-Suites and move to a all Office 365, Office 365, uh, platform citywide. That would put all of our staff, all of y'all, our volunteer boards that utilize G-Suites currently under the Office 365 platform, uh, and we think that that will provide for us a much, uh, much better working environment. Primarily, and, and again, there are a number of reasons why we are recommending this to y'all, but primarily, uh, the, the G-Suites platform has been underutilized and has been inadequate in a number of areas that we needed to be better performing. Uh, in regards to underutilization, right now, you know, we have 215 some odd, uh, users of G-Suites currently. I would venture to say that ninety percent of our users use it simply as an email platform, and they're not utilizing the Google Docs, they're not utilizing the Google Sheets, you know, they're not utilizing Google Meets, all the other stuff, you know, that we're paying for, uh, they're just not using it, it's just, it's purely an email platform for them. And, uh, you know, that's, I think it really boils down to, G-Suites is not a language of business, if you will. You know, we, we're all comfortable with, we all have utilized forever Office, everyone that we conduct business with utilizes Office, uh, people are comfortable with Excel, they're comfortable with work, uh, and, and shifting into something that is different, and, and quite frankly, not as robust, really it's not as good, uh, has proven difficult. Uh, also, in regards to the not working the way we need to work often, uh, there are storage limitations, there are limitations in regards to some of the collaborative aspects associated with G-Suites, uh, and that's really hit home this past year with COVID, uh, we're having difficulties with some of our meetings and that type of thing online, virtually through that platform. Uh, so, there's a number of things that, you know, really come to life for us, and, you know, we have, on this, on the other side, really robust product we're all comfortable with, a number of people are already utilizing it, uh, you know, we have the G-Suites platform, but everyone also has, or, I, I'm sorry, everyone also has Office in various, uh, iterations of that. Uh, so there's a duplication there that, you know, we could possibly do without. All that being said, uh, we would prefer to shift to the Office 365 model, the, I guess, fiscal impact to the city would be thirty-two thousand, you have it outlined, you know, in your table, in your board pack, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars a year, additional cost for that, uh, but we think that the benefits associated with the additional cost, um, are certainly worth it, we'll have a much better product moving forward, there won't be compatibility issues, the issues associated with familiarity, uh, you know, we can put G-Suites behind us and, uh, move forward with a more professional, uh, better functioning platform. The memo hopefully outlines it all for you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this.
Robert, I'm just curious, and I'm sure you are already head mail this, but when the new system is there, will you schedule a series of trainings for people, because if they're not trained to use it, then that's, you know, could be part of why the rule was underutilized, if people didn't really know how, uh, to use it, so when the new system is coming in, this would be a good time to get everybody up to speed on office features.
Absolutely, we can set up whatever training, you know, would be required, uh, you'd basically be looking at a shift, we were on Outlook forever, I believe most folks are on Outlook, but the shift from Gmail to Outlook, most people familiar with that. to Outlook, most people familiar with that, and then of course, the Office suite of software. We'll certainly set that up, and that should become fairly soon, assuming we can further move forward with this. We would need to make the transition by the first March, as our contract with our G-Suite provider does expire, and we do not want to renew for an additional year.
Yeah, we had, as I remember, Robert, we had a fairly expensive training program with G-Suites, but we're just finding that it's not robust enough to do what we need to do. I mean, we, we tried to use it the other day on just a meeting, sort of a online meeting. It just could not perform. I mean, it's, it was, it's very frustrating with the user to use that, so. I would recommend that we move forward with Robert's recommendation itself. I think you'll get a great deal more productivity if you're working.
What's the difference between the old and the new?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gilmore.
Cost differential, you just talked about?
Oh, yes, sir. The additional cost per year is 32,356 dollars. Yes, sir. And that cost, assuming Mr. Gilmore has a different idea, of course, would be distributed amongst the functions of the various funds, depending on users in those funds.
So what's the total cost? You'll, you'll bring to it.
Oh, the total cost? It would be the 29,520 plus the, oh, I'm sorry, it's 62,046 dollars.
Counsel member, you're perfect. Is Brian ready to say yet? Do you have the emergency note folder? Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item 3C is the Office of the City Attorney. 3C1 is the discussion of an alcohol license hearing. I think most everybody got your letter, so we'll listen, we'd love to listen to your thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, counsel, it ended last week, so and then the relative to our practice and recent complication of the requirement for an alcohol license application at a new location to have a public hearing before council. And upon further research, my concerns with continuing to do so and ensuring that we were according to due process requirements. And so state law does provide local government authorities with discretionary powers in granting licenses, but the alcoholic licenses. But in doing so, the local government authority has followed the standards of due process that are outlined in that code, SCGA 332. So with that, we have to have ascertainable standards within our ordinance, and then we have to apply those standards whenever you're reviewing a licensing application. And so if we're having a public hearing only for the purpose of having people come in and voice public opposition and then using that public opposition as the grounds for denying an alcoholic license application, there's case law that supports that that is an unconstitutional relegation of the licensing force authority. And so it would be my recommendation that the public hearing requirement for council, where you're only considering public opposition for an alcohol license application at a new location, be repealed, just to ensure that we are still within the standards of due process. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have from the memo or anything else.
Questions, counsel?
I told you this morning, I appreciate the opportunity to be in Los Angeles this morning to read up on that. And it helped me quite a bit to get a clear understanding that the council serves as the governing or the license board, the licensing authority, when someone comes, and if they've checked every box, then it is our duty to admit, to approve the license. We don't currently have a box that has anything to say about public opinion. That's, that's not in any of our ascertainable standards. So that helped me to truly understand that a license application is different from maybe other citizen concerns when they come to council. And that, that was good for me to understand that. If we, Ruth said she was unaware of any ascertainable standards that had to do with something as arbitrary as public opinion or how the people in the area feel about it, that that would be so arbitrary. So this, that's really helped me to understand that having such a concern over the neighbor's feelings was really not part of the licensing board's authority. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Gilmore, I know you have your thoughts on this.
No, not today. I think, however, may go back and take a look at if there are some other type of standards that council may want to consider in the future relative to sites. I don't know what those are, and they may not exist, but we'll take a look at it and see if there are any viable options for you all.
Can I ask if you work with Ms. Newby to see if there are legally any additional things that were something that's attainable?
Yes, sir. And to that point, state law does give the governing authority the discretion to create those standards. So as long as there are standards that we can put an applicant on those, and there are standards that you can, that are objective, then yes, you have that discretionary power to establish the standards and then to apply them uniformly in the licensing authority.
Counsel members, I would, I would assume that we don't, we need to move forward with your recommendation of repeal what we have in place right now, and then move forward with setting up standards that you can agree with, you and Mr. Gilmore can come forward and recommend to the council.
Yes, sir, that would be my recommendation.
Counsel members, right now we have a recommendation that would repeal the ordinance, I guess it's an ordinance at the time.
Yes, sir. It was a new amendment that we could add into codifying the practice requiring the public hearing, so it would be repealing that. It was Section 3, National Act of the, I think, R, 311R.
Is that going to require a vote?
Yes, sir. Actually, it would require a code amendment because it is part of the ordinance, so that would just be, I would have to draft that for a first hearing, so that can come up on the next special meeting.
Counsel members, your thoughts about moving forward with the recommendation from the city attorney? Do you have the emergency note folder? Look for the paperwork, follow it in a couple of sections. Thank you, Ms. Newby. 3D is the very big part. 3D1 is the discussion of crime statistics. Chief Lynn? I've asked Chief or Mr. Gilmore, and suggested to him after a review, we had the other day, that might do well for us to look at the actual documented information that we have as far as crime statistics. I know there's a lot of tracking on, from time to time on Facebook, when we might have an incident here in the city, but when you actually look at the work our police department is doing, it's, it's very good.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, counsel. Gilmore, give you a view from several different perspectives. So the first chart we've got here is our Part 1 crimes, and if you're not familiar, Part 1 crimes are the crimes that the FBI uses to publish their annual report on crime in the United States. So these are the most serious crimes that we respond to. There are murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, all kinds of thefts, except for motive illegal theft and arson. Your Part 1 crime rate is the total of all of those together, and on this chart, it's depicted from the most recent year, backwards in time for five years. As a comparison, generally when we're looking at crime statistics, we look at five to 10 year trends, because two-year, you know, isn't really a trend, so you have to look at that over time. So you'll see that last year, we had a, between 2019 to 2020, we had an 8% reduction in overall Part 1 crime, but if you look at individual areas, some of them were higher than the year before, but that's the pattern over time. And I would be happy to entertain any questions over that in particular, or we'll move to the next few. But if you have a question about this, I'll be happy to take it and attempt to answer.
Questions, move forward to Part 1?
Hey, just another view. This is starting in 2016 and moving forward because that's the way the rest of the data. I'm going to show you this graph tonight. So it shows you that over time, our crime statistics have actually been trending down instead of up, all of the perception, like the mayor mentioned, the perception from a couple of events or in social media, or even if, you know, somebody's opinion, you might think they're going up. In actuality, we've had a downturn in crime seven of the last year, seven of the last eight years. Granted, one year was only a single crime, but one down is better than one up. So this is the pattern. If you graph that data, I showed you on the first page. And interestingly enough... Excuse me, I've got it cleaned in those stairs. Hopefully, I remember most of it. The other way we look at our activity is not necessarily based on crime, but in how many calls we answer during the course of a year. And you'll see that for this most recent year, we had 28,600 something calls for service. Our average over the five years is 29,547, so we've gone from a high of 32,000 and change to a low of 27,000 and change last year. Curiously enough, we're the only law enforcement agency in the county house that had an increase in 2020. Some had small decreases to significant decreases. We went up by 1,509 calls. The only other public safety agency in the county that had an increase was Pasadena County Fire, they went up to 25 calls. So I've been trying to ascertain why that was. Part of it is what we'll talk about next, which is our population numbers. But I think our self-initiated call activity is what is the main reason that went up as we went down in some things, and I've got like the top 10 calls in frequency to share with you, but our, and this may be a function of COVID, of the pandemic, we, we have a lot more home watches and business watches and part checks than we did previous year. So why exactly, I don't know, but, but we did have a significant increase in that. Who would think our busiest day of the week would be Thursday? Actually, Thursday and Friday are our two busiest days of the week, followed by Wednesday and Saturday, followed by Monday and Tuesday, and Sunday is the slowest. Having said that, over the course of the entire year of 2020, that was only a swing of about 10 calls per day. So our demand is pretty flat, actually, across the seven days of the week, with Thursday and Friday being virtually tied, and Sunday being the lowest. I didn't graph that out, but it is, it's a fairly flat line. By hour a day, our slowest timeframe is 3:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the morning, with the absolute deadest time being 0:50. And if you've ever worked a midnight shift on patrol, you know that's about the time of day when you can hardly keep your eyes up, if you're out there working bedwax. And maybe that's why the busiest time of day is 10:00 PM, and our busiest timeframe is from 6:00 PM to midnight. So that's, that's the time when we're out there moving the most. We averaged 78 calls a day for 2020. And amazingly, we did that while the population was doing this. So Mr. Gilmore provided these numbers to me for the same time period, and that represents a 22% increase in population at the same time where we decreased the crime rate and had a fairly flat demand for service. It's been a little, a little higher, a little lower, but it's fairly flat over that five year period. Any? I've got one more slide. So I attempted to put them all three together to give you a view of how that looks. And so you've got the calls for services, the top bar, followed by the population figures, and then a little bit, a little one down the bottom is the crime rate. And you can see the trends depicted. We put graph lines in to show that, and the, just for sake of, so young, of, have an idea of what we do. 15,000 or more calls last year in self-initiated, that means not responsible dispatch call, where an officer on the road initiated an activity. It could have been a traffic stop, it could have been a business check, it could have been a community contact, it could be any number of things. It could be a burglary progress that they spotted, I mean, it could be just about anything that we do. We have found that as long as we can keep our volume of self-initiated activity above 30%, it gives us an opportunity to interrupt crime cycles. And fortunately, last year, we were above 50% in self-initiated. And in doing that, we also, with the pandemic, our engagement in certain areas was a lot less, like in traffic stops. We did probably half the, well, I can tell you, we did 3,659 pullovers last year compared to 5,750 the year before. So more than 2,000 less traffic stops because of our instructions to keep our workforce safe is to, you know, be mindful when you engage, and if, if you don't have to, you know, if there's a minor violation or whatever, then you're, you can use your own discretion to keep yourself safe. I think that's about it as far as what I had planned to present, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel member, questions?
I just want to thank the chief for putting this together. I think it's very reassuring and encouraging. I would hope to all of our citizens that, you know, as population is in fact increased, you know, the trends in, in crime certainly not increased, in fact, calls for service have turned it down a little bit. I think that's, I think it's a wonderful statistic to note, and I appreciate that being shared tonight, that's all.
Counsel member, questions? Thank you, chief. You're very informative. Thank you for taking the time to get all that together. Please tell our folks out there, please stay safe.
I'll do that, thank you.
Thank you. 3D is the finance department. 3D1 is the discussion of migration to Info 10 financial software. Moving?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I come to unite with a proposal to begin the process of migrating the city's financial software to a more capable system. to a more capable system. I say begin the process because then you'll see later on in the presentation, this isn't something that can be done overnight or without a lot of thought. So let's start with what we currently have. City's currently on INCODE nine, which was implemented in 2012. And this system really has served the city well, but it was designed for smaller organizations. And because of that design for smaller organizations, there's several drawbacks that I'd like to point out. The first would be an inadequate workflow, which has really led us to be very paper reliant on our processes. What I mean by workflow is actually following financial transaction through to the end differently. You know, currently, for example, when we get a bill in, we receive it either by email or mail. It is actually sent to the departments via inter-office mail, not email. There, whoever's responsible within the department for approving, encoding that, does it by hand. They send it back to us via inter-office mail. At which point, one of my staff members actually enters it, verifies that coding, and we cut the check from there. So as you can see, that's an over process. But because of INCODE nine and the way it's designed, we can't really improve upon that a whole lot. INCODE nine is also very inadequate when it comes to data reporting. I can't really dump a lot of data into Excel to do a lot of analysis or anything like that. It mainly dumps into PDF, which if anybody has any analysis skills, you know, is very conscious that you can't do anything with PDF. And also, the personnel suite is actually very rudimentary. I've got a little slide on that to go over a little while. So I'd like to go over some of the advantages to upgrading to INCODE 10. Obviously, yes, it's the same, it's the same designer, same company. It's all about gaining some efficiencies and replacing a lot of that workflow with digital and trackable processes. It also exports directly into Excel or CSD or a number of other formats that are very easy to do analysis on. And it also provides web-based accessibility, which would allow managers to, say, approve a financial transaction from their phone or anywhere else today at internet. So you don't actually have to have that paper form in front of them to code and sign. As I mentioned earlier, INCODE 10 actually has a personnel suite. INCODE nine calls that suite payroll because that really is all it does. It gets people paid every other week. It doesn't do a good job of tracking personnel files. Everything that personnel does is currently very paper as well. If you want to change your payroll deductions, for example, right now, you go to see Miss Karen, and she pulls that paper form that you updated. We request kind of the same thing. Pay stubs, actually, our pay stubs are delivered by email now. I'll give them credit for that. But if we were to upgrade to INCODE 10, you'd have the ability to log in and see those pay stubs anytime you want. And W2 delivery is also available. Right now, it's delivered by paper. So why am I coming to you now asking for this? You know, most of the time, I would wait until the budget process to ask for an upgrade to something like this. But really, the city's grown so much that, and financial activity has grown with it. By switching over to INCODE 10, not a lot of my staff are really keep pace with that growth. So we don't have one person who's just entering invoices all day to pay. That'll be obviously done throughout the city. And all we're really doing is reviewing and approving those payments. And it, and it really does make that all of our process a lot more paperless. And the big reason I'm here now is because there is a 12-month waitlist to get this program migrate, to begin the migration process. So from the day we sign the contract, there won't be a migration team on, on city property for 12 months. So obviously, if we waited to the FY22 budget cycle, we'd be another four months behind. So it'd be 16 months from today before we could even start the process. So here's the part that's scary. Migration really will happen in two phases. The first will be the finance and personnel suites. As I mentioned earlier, that would begin 12 months from when you guys get the approval. It takes about three months altogether, from what I'm told, to migrate off of INCODE nine into INCODE 10. And I do want to point out that upgrading to INCODE 10 isn't really an upgrade. It is a full migration. They, they don't act the same on the background. It's not like we just hit a button and get upgraded to a new app or anything like that. You really have the migrating data. It's treated differently. It acts completely differently in the background. So the total cost for that piece of it will be $42,000. Forty thousand, that is a one-time expense. That's actually paying the migration team to come here and do all of that migration. And there is an annual increase of $2,000. And that's actually for that increased capability within the personnel suite, which, as I said earlier, is currently just a payroll suite. And finally, our property tax and utility billing suites. We would do that about six months after the implementation of the finance and personnel suites. That allows us to get used to the new system. That allows us to work out any bugs before we start throwing the utility billing and property tax billing processes into that. And that would cost, I didn't get a firm cost on this because they wouldn't give me a firm quote since it's, since that would be at least 18 months from now. But they said it's usually about $10,000 more, and that would be full one-time cost. So the action I need from this council tonight would be giving concurrents to proceed with that update, or with that migration. That would allow us to get scheduled for one year from now actually doing the migration. What that would do in the future is it would, it would say that you guys have to budget $42,000 for migration in the next budget cycle. And, and FY23 budget cycle, we would need an additional approximately $10,000 to finish the migration. And I will entertain any questions we have.
No questions. Do we have concurrence to plan forward to '22 and '23 on this matter? Please move forward.
Stand by.
Appreciate your presence. Oh, let me see. Looks like the fire department is going to be coming in. Fire and emergency services, three F1 and assistance to firefighters, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I am here to ask for your.
Chief, can I ask a question? Just asking for money?
Yeah, roundabout way, yes, sir. I'm asking for your concurrence to apply for a grant from the assistance to fire grant. It's the FY2020 assistance to fire grant. The application period is open now. It closes February the 12th. And we're proposing to ask them for a ladder truck, which costs about a million dollars. The, the maximum grant we could get for a city our size is a million dollars. We priced a couple of these trucks out the last few weeks. And we're looking at something around $950,000 to, of course, as much as 1.4 million, which we can't get one of those regardless, at least through the grant we can. And the matching fund from the city area would be 5% as long as our population is under 20,000, which it currently is. So our matching funds would be about a max of $50,000 should we be awarded the grant. Like I said, we have to apply for the grant. And then obviously, a group of our peers up in the federal level get together and they decide who's worthy of receiving the grants. So, so basically, we're looking at possibly getting a million dollar fire report for about $50,000. So that's what my proposal is tonight.
So moved.
Kind of a no-brainer, but obviously, we do have to have the funds to do that. I understand that sort of quick. What is your comment?
I'm not quite enthusiastic, Dr. Albrecht. I think it would be fine as long as the local match remains around 50,000. If it goes up higher than that, that's going to be a problem.
Ladder truck we currently have, we would sell?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The ladder truck we currently have, we would sell?
No, sir, we would, we would maintain it. This would be an additional ladder truck. Would go out to Davis Farm Station and to be used out there in that response area. Height on this one? The height on this one, it may vary depending on the quotes that we get back. Minimum would be 75 feet. One of the quotes we got back that was 900, about 953,000, is a 107-foot ladder. And that's one that we actually like a lot. It's a, it's about a 40-something foot truck, about 42 feet. And it's a single axle, meaning that it would be more maneuverable than the tandem axle that we have right now, which we think would be perfect for the Davis Farm area, some of the apartments up there. You know, looking at it, we have 16 buildings in that House Lake Apartments that are three-story. And then you go out 127 to right next to the Woodlands, I forget the.
Wind River.
Wind River, yeah. Those houses out there that are three-story, you know, that's, that's, there's about 19 of those. So we have about 35, at least 35 structures we know that are three-story or greater, you know, or at least the square footage wise, well, in that response area. And right now, if we had to respond to ladder trucks from Station One in the city, we're looking at upwards of 15 minutes or more for that truck to get there. Just from normal driving. So that is our, that's why we're requesting that additional, it would be an additional ladder truck. We would not sell the one we have.
Counselor, questions?
Different questions? So we're looking at concurring for a grant up to a million dollars with matching funds of 5%. Everybody okay?
Yes.
Right? Did we need those?
No, you've prepared excellent fine. The chief would proceed with the grant.
We'll, we'll make the application. Thank you very much.
Chief, all the night, sir. Your toys are extremely expensive.
Yes, sir, they are. They are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is Councilman Brown. Ms. Black and Grace?
Well, this query very first, that has been up for the hardest and downtown scene. Like, and everyone that participated in this project to bring it to fruition. Looking forward to getting, getting the comments back that anybody wants to say. I have had plenty already today. So thank you.
They look great. I was down there and I looked at them today. Reverend King, you look very, especially there on that banner downtown.
I guess I need to go out and see myself.
Yeah. Ms. Warren says she has seen hers, but I think. It's a very successful program. The way you're thinking, very thinking, neat, right? Or figuring out that's something you dreamed about after visiting Dublin circa a couple of years ago. It is true. How tall were?
Mayor, for ten?
Following up on Ms. Brown and Grace's comments, I would just like formally say I'm very proud to see those banners in downtown area. And I think that's very good for our city and very good for our community. That's all, Mayor.
Reverend King? Ms. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Administration would like to recommend to Council that based on the trend we seem to be seeing with the COVID cases, particularly the hospitalization and the decreasing, that you authorize going back to having public participation in the various meetings effective February the 15th. We'd also recommend to Council that you authorize the delayed basketball program to proceed immediately. And the third item would be, we would be back to you, assuming that the trend holds, at your next meeting to determine about proceeding with the spring sports. Probably the way things are going, I think it'll be okay. But I'd like to have one more we've done to give you an idea. The hospitalizations through last January the 27th dropped from 128 to 75. That does not diminish, please don't take it that way, that the number of deaths we have is anyway less important, nor is the issue about still increasing number of cases. But the primary impact from the administration's standpoint that COVID has would be the hospitalization issue. And if our hospitals are able to adjust and decrease their population, then I think that would be a good sign for us to proceed on getting back to some type of normality. Now, I do want to point out, going back on Mr. Swan's excellent layout for the requirements, normality is not wide-open, free everybody can want hangout and all that type of stuff. There's a whole series, you may remember, that you approved for Mr. Swan users' program about protocol. We'll still have the same type of protocols in your meetings, which is the temperature checks, you know, those type of things. But I think it's important for us to start providing some of those services to the youth so people get some type of sense that a good time is coming. The other is that I am concerned about holding off very much longer on not having public hearings. We have issues coming up, or potential issues coming up for rezoning. We have our budget process coming up. There's bound to be a series of other items that come up. And I do think it's important to allow the public to come in and participate. As you may have noticed, excuse me, we made the best, best process we can relative to virtual participation. And you remember from the last meeting, there were some issues with it. And I just, being all curmudgeon, I guess, but I just don't believe that virtual participation for public hearings really works as well as what the public would expect. And so that's my recommendation to you all, ask you to concur.
Questions, Councilmember?
I have, a person asked me about our stance on 5Ks this spring. Do you see, I guess it's hard for the district. They do request to do that.
The 5K issue totally revolved around achievement police and what can be provided for them. However, that's based on the fact that some other group coming in requesting to have a 5K in the city. As it stands right now, if someone requested the city to hold 5K, probably the recommendation to you all would be no. It had nothing to do with COVID. You know, I just don't think that's one of our areas we need to get into. But you may remember, this goes back to the discussion that you all had on the issue about some events around New Year's Eve in the downtown. You know, where you, as council, have consistently said, you recommend following the CDC guidelines. But you're not the health police, so to speak, while coming in and saying these groups can't hold their own events. What you did come back and say is, is that, to be based on the data that's provided, the city will not support or the city will not provide certain functions if you're concerned about COVID. I think probably, particularly, hopefully, the trend continues to take a look at the numbers that will free up even more. Does that answer your question?
How about the walkers? How about the senior adults that walk? Allow them to come in?
I think that would be one to get ready to answer at your next meeting.
Then they do.
Right. Like I said, I'd like to, maybe just me, I'd like to have another meeting or so to confirm about the data.
I think the imperative thing is I contacted the hospital to see what yesterday was like. They only had 29 cases yesterday. So that was a 50% reduction from Sunday before. Of course, they had a spike in the middle of the week for one day. Most days have been down significantly as we've moved forward. So although that, that trend continues, and so we'll, we'll see that happening over the next couple of weeks. Other questions or concerns? Are you agreeable to move forward at this time without recommendation? Mr. Gilmore, you have concerns, Mr. Swan, you have concerns to move forward with your basketball program?
You're gonna have some elite, I mean, delighted young fellows and women out there. I've had several calls about, are you gonna start the basketball program? It'll be very heavy.
Can you think else, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Doobie?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, I wanted to update you about the cemetery standards. Um, you might want to wait first to see if we had any feedback locally about what some local cemeteries use for their burial standards, and also if we had any um, response yet from the Secretary of State's office. Um, last week I was introduced by email to the Chair and Board Member of the Cemeteries Board, and I had sort of response emails to them outlining, you know, what our specific questions were relative to burial standards, and asking, you know, what was their availability for a call or a Zoom meeting, and I haven't heard back yet from anyone yet. Um, so really, I think the main standard that we were wanting to get feedback on, for you to make a decision, was whether or not there was any recommendation to limit the number of cremains that individual could place in a private colubarium that they constructed on their own space. So, I mean, I think if you still want us to continue to try and wait to gather that information, we can, but because it is at your discretion, if you want to go ahead and move forward um, by resolution to establish a certain number or an unlimited number, um, then we could certainly do that.
I, I thought about this briefly. And I don't know how many private cemetery owners we have, but I just think we should consider, or, I don't know, we should consider their thoughts, or if, I'm just gonna use Watson Hunt, if they have a place, if they have certain guidelines, and they, and they only allow one person per lot or whatever, and then we all, as a city of period, these uh, lots or these great, you know, cemeteries, or, or we being, I don't know if good neighbors is the right word, but I think, you know, when I'm headed with this, city of period owns uh, two lots or two si- two areas, and it's unlimited. Is it fair to say Watson Hunt? I don't know if I'm saying this right, but anyway, I just think we, we should consider that, but I don't know really how I feel about it either way.
What you're saying is the city is free use of underground competition for-
Yeah, I think so.
That product, what people buy.
But each um, individual cemetery right now can establish their own standards. So, that would include-
Right, but they're in, in a business too, trying to make money.
Right.
So, that, I don't know what I'm trying to say. Or maybe the mayor pro temp can help me out.
One more thing on that, Dr. Albritton, I also think there's a difference in um, a cemetery where they have a commercially built colubarium, where people can purchase just a space in the colubarium. I think that's different from someone who owns a space in the city-owned cemetery and wants to construct their own colubarium as well, which is what we're looking at here, where we have a, a space owner who's asked about constructing a colubarium on their space, and with that, we need to provide the information to them about how many cremains could be kept in that, that one space.
Do we not also have size and design requirements on that going there?
Currently, we do already have some burial standards in our resoli- resolutions, um, that speak to, like, the stacking of coffins that we talked about before, the, the depth, um, and then the the height and width requirements of the colubarium, so the actual construction of them. We just don't speak to how many cremains can go into the colubarium.
That's something that, that we gonna have to establish, how many, because not, but you don't want states that, and my list would be right.
Yes, sir, there's currently not um, a state rule or a state standard.
But it's like you say, you do have dimensions, so you can only put so many in, in space. So, are you gonna, just whatever they could put in there would be allowable, or that would be one alternative?
Yes, sir, so currently we allow two cremains to be buried per space, but we don't specify, if someone builds a colubarium on a space, are they limited to the amount of cremains? Could they only fit two in it, or could they put however many the colubarium?
Can, can you remind us of the dimensions of the allowing, you had that already?
I do not.
Okay, so, but there is defined a dimension?
There is, it's a height and width requirement, um, the sister, do you happen to recall those standards? Uh, each plot is five feet by ten feet, so when it-
I'm sorry?
Each plot space is five feet by ten feet, um, with, in length, and then the height requirement, I believe, is three feet, but um, we can verify that, so I think if you were to construct a structure, it would have to be within those parameters.
Well, I think the structure itself, as, as I remember our discussion, it has specific sizes just for, we have home, home block.
There are.
There's a certain setback from the edge of the plot, of a certain kind.
Yeah, height and width is our number. So, it's gonna be a limited amount for, for anywhere, it's hard. So, are you gonna allow one or more than one on the block?
Are we, we're talking about the cremated remains of a, of a person?
Yes, ma'am.
After a, after a family has gone to the expense of building that, I don't wanna tell them how many family members they could put in there, I just don't wanna do that. I mean, you know, what if our, what if our number was one less than how many they had in their family? Sorry, buddy, no room for you.
How would we ever know?
It's, Mayor, I found that the standard, it's um, an above-ground structure may not exceed six feet height, you know, wider than three feet and no longer than four feet, measured from the ground level and perimeter grade space limits.
Okay.
I have a question on that, for the cremated within the barrier, is that with the dimension you just gave, is that gonna be a set space, just going back to what the piece of tape, say I have six members in my family, not a billboard, and can I allow, with the space, that we know that's gonna make multi- dimensional joint or whatever, and can I sit out there with my family in that, already built, but then that uh, that's what I'm asking.
And I think that's the exact question that we're posing to you. Um, do you, as mayor and council, want to establish a standard that says you can only have two cremains in one colubarium, or do you just want to say as long as your colubarium is this structure, this size, it doesn't exceed six feet height or three feet width or four feet, and, yeah, and no longer than four feet, that however many cremains fit in there are allowed?
How about that?
Um, for coffins, you do, but only two, and you also only allow two cremains if they're going to be buried. Yes, sir, well, that's the difference, two, that's, that's the question, we don't specify in our standards if you want to limit cremains to two in a colubarium. And the station is, the colubarium is an above-ground structure and the burial obviously is in the ground, um, do we want to limit two cremains to an above-ground structure since we only allow two cremains to be buried in one space? Do we need a motion, or what, what we got?
I don't understand the question, it's still right now, I'm just trying to make sure the question's answered.
Um, I was just bringing it back up, um, to let you know where we stood with the research that we have been doing and trying to hear back from the Cemeteries Board, and I can still follow back up with them if you want to continue to wait and get more information, but I did just want to, to update you.
Well, my, my concern is that uh, I love us to wait, and then if there's someone else done one of the sizes, get ready to do it, uh, what their limitation is, or what, what they have done is not, is we have, and we're the one that going forth with it, and just like I mentioned, my goal is that uh, once somebody has been cremated, then for the dimension line, you already gave us the dimension, then I think be able to, how many can a family member allow to be put in the section? If it's already a private place, they can put in that one barrier, and so that's what you're looking for, right?
If, if I may, councilmembers, we can wait forever today, potentially for some type of response. Uh, you may remember, the administration's recommendation was however many they can get in there, you know, because that's, that's their family issue, although I do understand Dr. Albritton's concern relative to um, uh, private sector and how they operate. Uh, if you're not ready to go now, that's fine, but I would suggest you definitely be ready by the next meeting, because you may remember, we already have a request from somebody who wants to do it. Uh, your correction to us was to contact these various groups to indicate what common practice was, or what local practice was, and as Ms. Doobie presented, we haven't heard anything back from, you know, in two weeks' time. Uh, and so therefore, I don't think we actually will, well, I know you won't hear more from the state for all practical purposes. Uh, the other cemetery operators in our area, I don't know for sure, they've given the opportunity, I don't know what might be the delay. Uh, but if you're not quite ready to go with this now, like I said, I would recommend you be ready to go at the next meeting.
I'll say that I agree with Councilman Peterson, as long as the colubarium itself meets with our design standards, I'm fine to move forward with as many as can be fit in there per, as the city manager for sure.
I am too, I am never giving her a deal again. They did anyway, so.
That was a big call there.
Well, I honestly-
Yeah, facts are facts.
I honestly don't know how much um, that impacts Watson Hunt, I mean, they're, they bury the people, they don't own the cemetery, so I don't know.
Well, they do own-
Oh, they own which one?
The gardens, they bury gardens.
Oh, well, they can make their own decision, we're making a city decision, right? Let's be kind to families.
Ms. Brian Grace? You good? All right, you, making, the, for us, the councilors, having, you can put in there, they can stay as long as they live by the CDC guy.
Uh, quick point. Uh, councilmembers, there is one other thing, I think, and this, as far as I know, will be the last item with this. Uh, we will be coming back, I believe, with some suggestions about the material that the common lines have. You know, we have the dimension sizes, you've addressed the number of residents, so to speak, uh, but we need to make sure that what it, I would assume they don't automatically do this, but we wouldn't want to have a colubarium coming in, made out of plywood, you know, that just kinda falls apart, so that'd be one thing, we'll be back to you to make suggestions on that, okay, we go.
So, once we give that additional information about the construction standards um, of the material, then we can put that together in the form of a resolution um, for your consideration about the establishing the construction material, and then also just indicating that it's an unlimited number of cremains allowed in a private colubarium on a space.
Thank you, Ms. Doobie. I know that was difficult, I appreciate all the support, and just within that, I don't know who's gonna be counting.
Sir?
I'm not sure who will be counting the people that are in the just.
Right.
I don't think it's a big problem. We've had, had, uh, two hundred and fifty, and we got one head now, and fifteen a night, we've battled people, it's just not a problem, not, not gonna be an issue. Ms. Doobie?
That's all I have.
Anything else, every time?
That's all tonight.
Mr. Smith, can you stop that?
No, sir, I can't, nothing.
Department, Mr. Warren?
I can't ask for any more money tonight, I did pay, sir.
Chief, do you think additional tonight?
No, no, I didn't want to be able to represent, I didn't ask for money.
Chief Parker?
Nothing further, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Yes. Can you do two months? Mayor and council, I wanted to let you know that today was the official launch of the uh, okay, well, I'm gonna let you know, it was the official launch of the city website. That's about how my day has been going with technology, so I'm not shocked. Um, uh, it's me, uh, we are uh, super excited that uh, the website, we haven't had a chance to look at it, uh, the navigation is a lot more user-friendly, it's reimagined to where a person can pretty much uh, decide where and how to get to the information that they want from the homepage. Um, but we are also currently making small changes to the main street page, as well as the economic development page. Once Ms. Jasmine Thomas, our new downtown manager, begins tomorrow, I'm gonna let her have just a couple hours, and then I'm going to descend on her about her thoughts on the main street page as well. Um, so, it was a lot of effort, but we are very excited and very pleased with how our uh, new city website has turned out, so we definitely, if you have not seen it, please take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Swan?
No, sir.
You ready to get the basketball started?
Ca- yes, sir.
How quick can you do that?
Uh, we'll be playing tomorrow.
Ms. Smith, is there anything to say?
No.
Ms. Warren, anything to the City Clerk's office? Ms. Mathis, do you have anything else there for us? Thank you for staying with us all this time, we appreciate that. We don't have an executive session this evening. No, sir. Councilmembers, at this time, I want to make a motion to the Senate, this is the second all, but we can't wait to write it. We do stand the jury on this.